All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Saline County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight, January 6, 2020, first one of the year. I'd like to begin with item one, consent agenda. Item A is approval of the agenda for January 6, 2020. Do you understand there's some staff discussion we'll have at the end?
It's good.
Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as printed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I approve. Motion passes. Item B is approval of the minutes for our last meeting on June 3, 2019. Spend some time. Any comments about those?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that of the minutes as printed. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as printed from June 3, 2019. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, application CUP 2020-101. This is a request from Evergy for a conditional permit to enlarge the existing electrical substation. I'll hand it over to the staff to give us an overview.
This, the applicant is Evergy. The owner of the property is Timothy J. and Leanne Sankey. The comprehensive plan and zoning for this parcel shows that it is within the urban service area as designated on the growth area map. The proposed land use is the expansion of an existing utility substation. The location is 2100, approximately 2100 East North Street at the intersection of Marymount and East North Street. The applicant, under my findings, the applicant is proposing the expansion of that substation. West Star, now Evergy, is in negotiations to acquire additional acreage for the expansion. The expansion on this site is part of a larger system-wide upgrade that will improve service for the area. This proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan and, as stated before, located within the urban service growth area. The facility is located within 1,000 feet of the regulatory levy, requiring acceptance by the Corps of Engineers. The applicant is proposing a second entrance to the site, which will require review and permit from the Road and Bridge Department. The applicant is also working with the city on a fence permit as well as a levy requirements from the Corps of Engineers. The parcel is not located within the floodplain. There have been no public comments regarding this case since this has been published. Comments from other departments and agencies, staff has been working with the city on its review of the proposal. The Corps of Engineers approval is required. Road and Bridge Department has no issues with the proposed entrance that the applicant is wanting. The, I listed the review criteria that staff uses. There's three items there. I won't go into detail on those. I'll let you review those. But staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions, that any outdoor lighting must be oriented to prevent infiltration onto any adjacent residential properties. Applicant must coordinate with the city on a fence permit, commercial permit review, and the Corps of Engineer requirements. Applicant must coordinate with the county engineer and Road and Bridge Department on any driveway permits required. Address will be assigned by the county zoning once the conditional use permit has been approved. Building permit will be issued by the county zoning once review by the city is complete. The lot split may also be recorded by the Register of Deeds upon approval of this conditional use permit. County zoning will issue a certificate of occupancy once the city's final inspection of the project is complete. The alternatives that you have before you are to either approve the request with the conditions as listed above, deny the request, any denied request is appealed to the county commission, conditionally approve the request with any conditions the commission may deem necessary, that additional conditions that you may deem necessary. With that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Would the applicant wish to share any additional information with the commission?
My name's Chris Mahram from Evergy. I'm in the substation site design, sorry, my camera here. Site development team, and I say team, but there's really only two of us. The other members in a concurrent meeting tonight down in Wichita, so he couldn't be here. But Tim has covered everything pretty well. Pretty typical, we need, we have a postage stamp size substation there right now due to some upgrades. Newer equipment, newer code compliance is required, so more space is needed. So that's why we're here, asking for the conditional on this permit. Any questions? I'll take questions.
So obviously, since the levy is your restriction on the east side, I assume you're going west a bit.
We're going west, yeah. I do have a little bit of a handout here. I don't know if we're gonna do a, you're gonna hand this out?
Yeah, that's fine.
Kind of has some diagrams on it. I'm gonna leave that out. Am I able? Might have to share something on that. We could do it. I can share one thing.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Sir, will that house, is there that building be torn down, or do you have any plans at this point?
We do not have any plans to tear down that.
Okay. So will it still be used as a residence then, or do you have any idea at this point?
I don't have any idea, but I mean, it's possible it could be, I guess. The lot split, I think if you turn to one of those pages, going towards the back, it will show you how we're splitting that up. So we'd have, we'd have access to east of the house and in this area, in this tract. So then that tract would be split out separately, so that's the tract of the house.
Your actual building is going, or not building, but structure is going to be in track two?
Two, in, yeah, track two.
Yeah, basically two.
Oh, yeah, and actually if I look back on the page, and get that in yellow, kind of have it laid out there. Right here. All right. So the house is, just house is.
Over here. Oh, it's going toward here. There's a big scoring building in the west of the house.
Should be pointed out that the Sankeys are still living in that house, and they won't, they're be selling that portion of their land. So the house is not part of it? No.
Oh, okay.
I should have mentioned Alex Darby's here from PEC. He's a consultant, project manager on this.
Do we know, is there any other development that's planned to go on here?
No.
In this area, it's just that?
It's just that. Yeah.
This is from Mr. Hamilton. Do you have any idea when the city might be getting back to you on this, the sentence in the USA?
They told me, I went to a, I think we all went to a meeting with the city, and they said that the Corps of Engineers is the big one on that, and so.
Down to the corps, it's got them.
It takes about 30 days.
Okay.
They said 30 to 60 days, I think is what they said.
Yeah, and we've been coordinating with Wayne Nelson, with the city.
Okay.
Levy sponsored to gain access for Geotek, and then also to get approval for the project with the site fill as well as the foundations. Obviously, the Corps cares when you start program holes behind your land, so.
Okay, thank you.
Public Works has been really good about, you know, keeping in touch with, you know, stuff too, over there.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, thank you. Is there any comment from the public, either for or against?
James Hall, Great Plains Manufacturing, we fully support the project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the discussion, bring it back to the commission. Any discussion? No discussion, and we're ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve CUP 2020-101, and as per recommendation by staff, with the conditions noted.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve application CUP 2020-101 with stated conditions from staff. All in favor, please show with the right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item, additional items from staff?
This is a discussion item that I've included for tonight's meeting regarding the comprehensive plan update. The current Saline County plan was adopted in 2008 as an update to the original plan in 2000. It's generally recommended by the state to have communities update their plans every seven to 10 years. This timing though, I mean, it can be even sooner than that if there's, you know, anything that comes up, like a federal agency or a state agency has a policy change, that sort of thing. But it's been since 2008, and it's over 10 years now, and it's about ready for some sort of a, of an update. And what's really precipitated this recently was Fort Riley, in conjunction with the North Central Region Planning Commission, recently completed a document titled the Fort Riley Smoky Hill Unmanned Aircraft System Corridor Study. This proposed airspace corridor would be used for training personnel in unmanned drone aircraft. A portion of Saline County has been included within this corridor, and I would point out, it's probably within, I believe, it's the southwest corner. The study recommends that participating counties update both their comprehensive plan and their zoning regulations to accommodate the proposed corridor. Funding is being proposed by the North Central Region Planning Commission to assist communities in their implementation of these changes. Updating the comprehensive plan basically involves one of two, there's two routes that you can go. You can either do a complete update, which would involve a total overhaul of the document. This would include input from various stakeholders and general public through several focus groups held at locations across the county. This is typically more time-consuming, more expensive, if completed by a consultant. This update can also be done in-house by staff. Typically, a complete update takes on average about six months for a consultant, but the time constraint is longer if staff does it. It usually takes, you know, about a year. The, if done in-house, but depending on day-to-day workload of staff, I mean, it's, it could be shorter, it could be longer. I mean, it just depends. The added cost of a consultant might be offset though by funding from the NCRPC. The minor update is the other option. This would involve either a staff or consultant coordinating with the planning commission on reviewing the current goals and land use policies outlined in the plan for relevancy. Statistical information and minor adjustments to the land use maps may also be performed. Public input would still be considered, however, it would be only through the scheduled public hearings that you would have on a monthly basis that we have like right now. The staff is seeking commission guidance on those, on the following options that I've listed, four of them. It should be pointed out that while the current plan has been in force since 2008, since the 2008 recession, there's really been no major changes in the land use patterns in the county or the economy since then that have facilitated any amendments or goals outlined in the plan that, you know, so it's been, it's been a pretty solid plan that we've had in place since 2008. The options available though would be two that you would be considering are, you know, you could complete the update of the comprehensive plan using staff. This would be less expensive, but may take longer to complete. Option two would be complete the update through a consultant. That's more expensive, but may be completed sooner. A minor update using staff, that would be about the same amount of time as using a consultant either way. The minor update through a consultant, that would be a little more expensive, but the consultant may also be able to provide additional services as a package price. So updating like part, part of the zoning regulations in addition to the comp plan, and that might be offset at that time. So with that, I'll just, you know, I mean, that's, those are the options, and we were just kind of wondering what you all would think about.
To open up the commission, I.
What year was it? What year was it? We?
2008 through 2010 is when we got our fund.
Well, I had my fund in 2000.
Cause that was.
And I don't remember a consultant being used.
We had.
We did it.
$75,000 we spent on the consultant, three years, no changes.
Nothing happened.
Nothing other than, other than a lot of, a lot of, we had a lot of publicity of, well, and one thing we did incorrectly was, we opened up the discussion, and she would talk about one item, and he talked about a different item, and he talked about a different item. We finally said, all right, chapter one is the only item we're talking about tonight. We waited three years. Three years. So.
I'm just saying, if you want to do this again, we ought to be more organized, and we had the sheriff's department here. It was quite an ordeal, it was kind of fun to come to the meeting.
Actually, people watched it on TV.
Yeah. It's the circulation of the journal doubled just to see what happened at our meeting. Anyway, we need to relook, because we did a lot of work on that, had some great ideas.
Then the whole thing was shot down, so where's all that, where's all that paperwork at?
I'd have to. Gathered dust somewhere.
I'd have to find it in one of my files, my front essential.
File 13.
Yeah. We spent three years of, you know, town meetings.
Well, it was, and it was started, it was, it was over two different staff changes in the middle of it, right, everything else. So we had a real fun time.
But the, basically, I wanted to kind of review a little bit what, what kind of precipitated this, that what they're proposing is, Fort Riley is proposing an overlay, is basically what it is, that has to be addressed in the plan. And it says, says the adoption of a UAS corridor overlay would provide a defined area in which to allow greater coordination between Fort Riley and Saline County. The overlay may consist of the following: renewable energy development provisions, vertical obstruction provisions, dark skies policies for residential and commercial uses and frequently encroachment propositions. And their, their goal is, they say to, one of the goals that they're, they're trying to fulfill with this particular study was to update the comprehensive plan and zoning regulations to incorporate the UAS corridor compatibility policies, update and adopt future land use maps, supporting goals, objectives, and policies, update zoning regulations and incorporate the UAS corridor. That, that's really not that too difficult to do, but instead of that, I, we figure that since we're gonna go that route, we may as well look at the goals from each of the different sections. And I think that, I've done several of these in the past, several of these updates in the past, and I think there's a way we can do it without it being so tedious. I think that, you know, if, if, if you go with the route of staff or a consultant staff would still be involved with, you know, basically following the consultant around and making sure that they're on the right track, you know, and making sure you all want them to, or doing, making sure they're doing the things that you all want as well, but with.
You know, Fort Riley's gonna send you a basic outline of what they're wanting for us to incorporate into them.
It'll be easy that way.
That's right.
We don't have any decisions to make, do we?
I don't see the need for us to spend a great amount of time or money.
Right.
On doing something like this. Let's just go ahead and take what they're looking, what they're proposing, we look at it, and we incorporate it into the plan.
I think just based on the previous experience, if we try to do too much, we won't get anything.
We do, we just have to do it section by section, not open up the whole book.
Yeah.
Right. And so, and, cause the way I used to do it, where I, the way I'm accustomed to doing it is, is it does take long, but the thing is though, is if it's, if you take, you know, basically what staff would norm, what I would normally do is I would say, okay, which sections do you feel if you're, you know, when you look through the document, which of the goals have we achieved, which ones haven't we achieved, you know, which ones could be tweaked to meet the current economic conditions and that sort of thing. I haven't, like I say, this has been a pretty solid plan. I mean, it looks like most of the goals are either in the process of being implemented or have already been implemented. And so it's a, it's a good, it seems to be a solid document, but it's, it's one of those things where I, I worked for the city of Holcomb as their planner out in western Kansas, and about 10 years ago, they had a comprehensive plan update they had to do because their comp plan dated from like 1980. So it was, it was like 20 years old almost, so I, we had to, we had to update that. And so you don't want to get too far, you know, beyond in the time span past that seven to 10-year point, because usually that's the period where there's economic changes that start happening regionally that might influence us, and developers, you know, may think differently also of where to develop, where's the best place to, where do utility companies want to, you know, establish their, their expansions and that sort of thing, so.
Was there any timeframe mentioned? Was there any timeframe?
Well, right now, it's, I believe April is when they're expected to, I think, you would know.
Yeah, so the North Central Planning Commission is trying to solicit for some funds to assist, because we're not the only county that they're coming to with this particular corridor study, to assist with, or to see if we can get some, some type of funds whatsoever to help some of these counties go through the, a comprehensive plan update, or even build a comprehensive plan, because there are several counties that even don't have one. April is, hopefully the timeframe is when they will know what their funding available, and then it would just be up to us in Saline County to figure out if that's something that we wish to work with, or if we just want to do everything in-house.
So more importantly, when is their UAS corridor area planned on being implemented?
The corridors are already implemented.
They're just wanting us to codify it.
Correct. They're just wanting us to take a review of their suggestions and really build that into, like Tim said, you know, some of the suggestions that came through to work, just to, to look at it from renewable energy type of standpoint, solar, and really in all honesty, their corridor is a very, very small sliver of our county, so we're not talking the whole entire county, which is a good thing.
Get their recommendation and take it.
That's exactly right.
Move, seconded, and pass.
And so maybe it would be helpful, so.
Really, such a small, such a small.
Right, so here is kind of the, the map area, and it shows, I mean, just that very, very, very small area.
Is that basically the weapons range?
Your weapons.
Yes.
Weapons range out there, okay.
Yep, yep. But, so what we can do is, we can certainly take the excerpt from their, this whole book here and provide you with just the Saline County recommendations.
There you go.
So that you guys can look over it, and we can certainly discuss that out in another meeting, but I don't think anything that they've asked for is unreasonable.
I wouldn't imagine.
Do you see anything that would be unreasonable?
No, I do not.
I just remember in what you all were remembering, I was sitting in the county commission, and people were coming in there and complaining about whatever they saw of the plan, but they were complaining about the stuff that was already in there.
Well, that was the word.
You probably all heard that.
But it was the stuff that existed.
Yeah, existing, and it's like, well, we didn't know that was there, and it's like, well, it is. So they were thinking that was all brand-new stuff. So it was, it really got confusing for the public too, I think. Well, that's it, because we opened up the door, the chapters one through 20, and that's why. Everybody's just going here, 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 here. It's like, all right, it's time to come home. Let's start here. And that's the only item we discussed that night.
And coming back to Tim's point, since 2008, there has not been that much change in this county. I don't really feel the need to open up a can of worms, just because.
Do you want to review it and make suggestions to us? Which we need to look at?
That's probably what, you know, cause that's what, I've done that also. I've just reviewed like the goals and said, you know, you know, and you can either take my, you know, my recommendations, or you can just say, oh, Steph, you don't know what you're talking about, and just look at it. But it's, but I can look it over, and I can give you suggestions as to, you know, which areas might, you know, be, might need to be tweaked a little bit, you know, with the wording, and that's it. You know, I mean, it's not, it's, it doesn't have to be reinventing the wheel, so to say, it's just a matter of looking at the goal.
And we did, we tried to redo the whole thing, and spent three years. I can't see, I can't see the county spending more money like we did that.
Wasn't that 75,000?
I believe it was 75, yeah.
Sounds about right. Cause the guy out of Denver, great guy to work with.
Oh, yeah, he was, he was a sharp guy, but that stuff's that gathering dust today. So I believe we need to keep it simple and work with your expertise.
And even if you do it.
Not making a minor, but.
It's a time rather than.
Sure. Deal with the times, you know, we had to hit the cell phone tower thing hard, because we were getting overwhelmed with them. We made regulations.
But you have to.
I need to add Tim motion.
Typically, you have to, most communities will do an annual review anyway of certain things, like if something that comes up during the year, and say, okay, well, gee, maybe we should amend this goal or whatever. So we should be doing that anyway, but it's, this, this would give us an opportunity to, you know, as I figured, as long as we're gonna be addressing this situation with Fort Riley's proposal, is that we can, I can go ahead and make you some additional proposals as well.
And it was set up, we were doing that every March.
Yeah.
Just when we would do that.
Yeah.
It's actually, I believe, it was March, that we would, that we would go back and review that.
Does that mean we've got to read it between now and March?
No. The whole ordeal's got to have a hand.
There you go. You can start tonight.
See how much of a change this took out.
But we did, we came up with great ideas, but it was just, it was too big of a change for all at once. People were overwhelmed.
And a lot of those ideas could, could work if we were doing it a little bit at a time, and we were just updating this. And a lot of them needed to be thrown out.
Well, the county commission at that side, at that time just said, Sheldon, we're stopping.
Well, I think we had several.
It was a different commission.
County commissioners elected because of it, so.
Exactly right, and that's part of it.
The only thing that I see, and I, I won't keep you any longer, but I just, I'm saying that the, the, the one thing that I would say as staff that would probably need to change in the document would be if, since we've got GIS, I would like to work with them on improving the maps, because we, the way, they're, they're a little difficult to read, the land use maps, and have like little insert, I was thinking I could work with them on putting some insert maps together showing like the area around Salina, because that's where we have the biggest conflicts planning. And it's hard to read those maps. I've got to blow them up really big on my computer to see what's going on, and so I, I thought maybe if I could work with them and do a little separate insert.
Yeah, but that's minor changes. It's just a minor update, it's not even a change.
We said something out there, like maybe February we'll review some of the suggestions, and then March.
Sure.
We can look at, maybe some minor changes, something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, county has some good people in that department, so I think we rely on them to do that.
Any other discussion?
I think you all's down at that end of the table said it very well.
They did.
They did.
Do you need any other direction from us then, I guess, is our question?
I think that, I think you all have answered.
I mean, we'll review anything that you guys feel like need to. That's, we can all agree to that.
All right. Chair, move to adjourn.
Second.
Then move to second and adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
In your turn.